Good evening. This, the second meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. If you have cell phones, please turn them on vibrate or turn them off. Tonight's invocation will be led by Father Konstantinos Morales of the Greek Orthodox Cathedral of the Enunciation. If everyone will please stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, we bow and give thanks to you, Lord, for the blessings of this new year. We ask you, Lord, to offer your blessings upon our great city of Baltimore, those in civil authority, and to the devoted citizens. We also give thanks, O Lord, for the 80 years of service of the Enunciation Cathedral Philoptico Society, and we ask you continue to bless their efforts and everything that they do for your faithful people. I wish to offer you a small excerpt from a prayer of St. Basil the Great, a 4th-century saint. Preserve us, your servants, those who minister, our leaders, the armed forces, and all the people present here in your holiness. Grant that we may meditate upon your righteousness at all times in and every season. Guide us in our actions so that we may do what is pleasing to you, and you may find us worthy to stand at your right hand when you return to judge the living and the dead. Deliver our brothers and sisters who are in captivity. Visit those who are sick. Protect those who are danger. Give rest to the souls of those who have fallen asleep in the hope of eternal life, where the light of your face shines. Here are the petitions of all those who beseech you for your help. For you are the giver of all good things, and to you we give glory, together with your eternal Father and your holy good and life-giving spirit, now and forever into the ages of ages. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father Morales? Thank you. All right. I want to thank Father Morales for the invocation. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Burnett, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark, Mr. President, with a quorum.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Professor Doug Colbit and the University of Maryland Law School's Access to Justice Clinical Program, who will talk about their new and exciting Failure to Appear warrant, Second Chance Program.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members of the council, for inviting me to share a new program that began today called the Failure to Appear Warrant Second Chance Opportunity for people who missed their court dates on nonviolent misdemeanor charges and thereafter received an arrest warrant from the court and now live in fear 24/7 of being arrested and being sent to jail, where many will stay up to 45 days if they cannot afford the bail. So, the students, the law students at Maryland Law School, the clinical students, have been working in collaboration with Baltimore State's Attorney Marilyn Mosby, with Baltimore's Police Commissioner Kevin Davis, with the Baltimore Public Defender, and with the District Court Judiciary. And for the past 18 months, we've been having discussion, which reached the point where now I come before you and ask that you notify your constituents, your communities, that anyone who has missed a court appearance and who has a failure to appear on nonviolent misdemeanor charges can now go to the District Courthouse and speak to a public defender. They don't have to go to court, they don't have to appear before a judge. It's as if you and I were to go and see a private attorney. And with council's advice, that individual learns whether he or she is eligible, and if eligible, they can then file a motion to a judge to see whether they can remove that warrant and get a new court date on their cases. So, what we like about this program is that for years, for as long as anyone can remember, there have always been thousands of people who live in fear of arrest because they missed court, and now they find themselves between a rock and a hard place. For people, many of us who are here today, we would merely call our lawyer and have our lawyer speak to the judge or to the state's attorney and get those warrants removed. And you might ask, well, why did people miss their court date in the first place? And that's because often people fear losing their job, so they go to work instead, or they go to school instead, or they have childcare issues, or perhaps because they're suffering illness. So, what we're looking to do here, and the reason this collaboration has been so unique, is that it really is a win-win situation for our pre-trial justice system. Taxpayers pay an enormous amount of money to keep nonviolent misdemeanor defendants in jail for that 30- to 45-day period. Now, we offer the opportunity for people to take ownership of their past charge, but to remove a warrant that allows them to return to society. And I think with that, Mr. President, I can go on, of course, but I think the gist of the program is that this is one of those rare opportunities, and I'm going to give you another information sheet. What I would appreciate is that everyone, please make your constituents aware that from today until January 31st, for 17 days in this month, people need only go to the courthouse, speak to a public defender, decide whether or not you're eligible for the program, and if so, you let your lawyer do the work. The individual goes home, they don't have to fear being arrested or anything like that, and then they wait about two or three weeks until the judge makes a ruling. The state's attorney will review all of these petitions, all of these motions, to make sure that there's nothing more serious in the person's background. And at that point, the state's attorney will recommend recall the warrant. The individual comes back on a different date to face the charge, and at that point, the state's attorney decides whether or not to prosecute. So, thank you.
Thank you, Professor. And most of our council people have, can y'all hear me? Most of our council people have websites. I'm quite sure we all put it on our websites so our constituents can know. And again, thank you for your great job.
It's been a real privilege, so thank you.
Thank you. Is the council custom to journalize the invocation? Ask for a motion. Journalize the prayer. Motion by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Cohen. All of the favor to journalize the prayer, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of Proceedings from the December 8th City Council meeting is on the council member's desk.
Motion to approve the journal moved by Councilman Scott, seconded by Councilman Costello. All of the favor to adopt the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, the journal is adopted. We do not have any bills signed by the mayor. Bills will be introduced.
Marion City Council Resolution 17-0004, Railway Franchise Consent to Transfer. For the purpose of acknowledging that Baltimore Washington Rapid Rail LLC has sought the consent of the Marion City Council of Baltimore to transfer of the authority to exercise the franchise formerly held by the Washington-Baltimore and Annapolis Railroad in accordance to PSC Order Number 87248 in Case 9363, granting consent for BWRR to exercise the franchise formerly held by the Washington-Baltimore and Annapolis Railroad in general relating to the transfer of a certain railway franchise. Sponsor President Young, Middleton.
This is something that the Public Service Commission require for them to do, and this is something that they need to have a mayor and city council, mayor and city council resolution. But this has been assigned to Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
Marion City Council Resolution 17-0005, Charter Amendment Term Limits. For the purpose of providing that a person who has served a certain number of terms as mayor, comptroller, president of the city council, or member of the city council is ineligible to again serve in that office during the immediately following term, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions, and submitting this amendment to qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor Schleifer, Henry, Dorsey, Scott, Stokes, Pinkett, Bullock, Burnett, Sneed, Clark.
Chair recognize, Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This is Michael.
Hello? Is it on? Thanks, Jose.
I want to start by saying what an honor and a privilege it is to be a member of this city council. I do not take my district and their support for granted, which is why my first act on this council is something that I heard across every single neighborhood in my district while campaigning that they expect of their next councilperson. And although term limits was not part of my platform, doing the work of the people was. I believe the children are our future, teach them well, and let them lead the way. I'd sing that for you guys, but I'll spare you.
Michael Jackson.
I want my daughter and all the children of Baltimore to feel that with hard work and making a difference in their community, they too may one day earn a seat on the Baltimore City Council. We need our youth to know that their fresh ideas and real solutions to our current issues will be heard in Baltimore City. Lastly, I want Baltimore residents to forever feel the level of optimism we feel today with this new invigorated city council. Term limits will do just that, ensuring we are no longer skipping over generations of young leaders who share our mission of moving Baltimore forward. And as the Dean of the City Council, Mary Pat Clark, puts it best, "Limits for unlimited opportunities." Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0006, Real Estate Practices Disclosures Industrial Railroad and Truck Operations. For the purposes specifying a certain format for and broadening the scope of a pre-sale disclosure required to be given potential buyers of real property, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to disclosures required in real estate transactions. Sponsor Cohen, Henry, Clark.
Chair recognize, Councilman Cohen, you wanted to speak to it?
Thank you, Mr. President. This legislation relates to the changes from Transformed Baltimore, in which several parcels in my district were rezoned from industrial to mixed-use and residential. And as a result, we would like for realtors to disclose if someone is going to live near a railroad or a truck line. This should not in any way hamper real estate development in Baltimore, but it should just help consumers, people buying houses, to know what they're buying. That's what this legislation does. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. This has been assigned to the Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0007, Zoning Condition Use Parking Off-Street Garage, 1000 South Elwood Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking off-street garage on the property known as 1000 South Elwood Avenue and as outlined on Reddenly Company Platt. Sponsor Cohen.
Chair recognize, Councilman Cohen.
This was, my predecessor, before I became councilman, was involved in creating the 1000 South Elwood Project, and we are seeking an ordinance to help them get a garage.
Thank you. This has been assigned to Land Use Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0008, Baltimore City Landmark List, Exteriors George W. King, Abraham Briscoe Bethel Community House. For the purpose of designating the George W. King Abraham Briscoe Bethel Community House, 1232 Droido Avenue, as an historical landmark exterior. Sponsor Costello, Henry, Middleton.
Please note, Councilwoman Clark is a co-sponsor. Chair recognize, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. My introduction to this is a very obscure legislative procedural anomaly. Essentially, this was introduced in July of last year, provided a one-year protection for this property, for the facade. That expired when the old council expired on December 5th, so I am reintroducing it to continue those protections. Thank you, Mr. President.
I got a little sidetrack there. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. Resolution introduced.
City Council Resolution 17-0002R, Coordinated Agency Violence Reduction Strategy. For the purpose of requesting that the Baltimore Police Commissioner, the Baltimore Health Commissioner, the Director of Department of Public Works, the Director of Transportation, the Director of Recreation and Parks, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, the Baltimore Housing Commissioner, the Director of City Stat, and the President of the Baltimore Development Corporation, present to the city council on a coordinated violence reduction strategy for Baltimore. Sponsor Scott, Dorsey, Pinkett, Bullock, Henry, Middleton, Cohen, Stokes, Burnett, Sneed, Clark.
Please note, Council President Young is a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. Chair recognize, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, this resolution is very simple in writing form, but it's very critical to the city of Baltimore. For years, the council president, myself, and other members have tried and been to push the city to deal with violence outside of the view of the Baltimore Police Department. We know and believe that violence is a disease and should be treated as such, knowing that you don't just cure a disease by treating one symptom. And for years in our city, what we have done is tried to treat the symptom of just violence itself, and nothing to do with the other factors that lead into that. And we know that there are agencies in the city that can do many things to deal with the violence. So, if you look at a map of homicides in the city of Baltimore in the year of 2007, 1995, 1993, 2015, 2016, and thus far in 2017, they typically happen in the same places over and over again. If you were to overlay that map with vacant houses, they would be in the same places. If you were to overlay that map with health violations, with housing code violations, with light outages, with illegal dumping citations, they would all be in the same area. So, we want all the city agencies here to come before the city council and tell us in plain form directly, how are they going to work together to work to reduce violence in the city of Baltimore, for us to no longer just put that on the shoulders of the police commissioner and the police department, for us to take a deeper look at how each and every city employee can help to deal with reducing violence in our city. And thank you to all of my co-sponsors.
Please note, Councilman Costello is a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee, which you chair.
City Council Resolution 17-0003R, Quarterly Budget Briefings. For the purpose of calling on the chief of the Finance Department's Bureau of Budget and Management Research to brief the city council on how the city's actual finances compared to its budget projections in a timely manner after the close of each quarter in the city's fiscal year. Sponsors Costello, Middleton, Schleifer, Clark, President Young, Burnett, Dorsey, Pinkett, Bullock, Cohen, Stokes, Sneed, Henry, Scott.
Chair recognize, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. The purpose of this resolution, as well as the next resolution, is to ensure that the Budget and Appropriations Committee has regular oversight over the Department of Finance and all of the agencies within city government. Vice Chairman Pinkett, myself, and your staff, Mr. President, will be meeting with the administration next week to discuss protocols and procedures. And if it's okay, I have one thing to add for the following. In respect to the budget oversight hearings for Baltimore City Public Schools, prior to the holiday, Councilman Cohen, who is Chair of the Education Youth Committee, again, myself, your staff, Mr. President, and Vice Chairman Pinkett, did meet with them to discuss protocols and procedures. And the committee's intention is to keep these two resolutions open for the duration of the term, to provide those regular oversight hearings. On the administration-wide ones, we intend to have quarterly hearings. We will also have periodic hearings, hopefully synced up on the same dates for Baltimore City Public Schools. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee, and if you could read that into the record, he already spoke to it, and we'll sign it.
City Council Resolution 17-0004R, Budget Oversight Hearings for Baltimore City Public Schools. For the purpose of calling for regular budget oversight hearings for Baltimore City Public Schools to improve transparency and accountability in the allocation of over $1 billion and the public funding of the vital task of educating Baltimore's children. Sponsor Costello, Middleton, Schleifer, Clark, President Young, Burnett, Dorsey, Pinkett, Bullock, Henry, Cohen, Stokes, Sneed, Scott.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee. You can find the consent count in section A at the back of the agenda. It is a motion to approve the consent count. Motion by Councilman Scott, seconded by Councilman Cohen. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, this count is approved. Chair recognize, Councilwoman Middleton.
Mr. President, I move to extend the floor privileges for my special guest from the Greek Orthodox Cathedral of the Enunciation.
Seconded by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of extending the floor privileges to Councilwoman Middleton's guests, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged, and your guests may take the floor.
Mr. President and members of the council, I want to recognize the Philotakos Society of the Greek Orthodox Cathedral of the Enunciation. Philotakos is Greek for friend of the poor, and this group has been personifying its name in Baltimore since 1936. With programs like Backpacks for Kids and Providing Assistance to Baltimore, to the Baltimore Station, thousands have experienced the caring human touch offered by the Philotakos Society, all while teaching the strong values of compassion to its members. I invite you, Mr. President, and other members of the council, to come join me in a picture with this fantastic society. Could we have representatives of the, is there representatives of the society here? Yes, okay. And I guess I'll have to, would you like me to read the citation first?
You can read it on the floor.
And then we'll call all the members as well after I guess I read the citation. Thank you so much for joining us. The Baltimore City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Greek Orthodox Cathedral of the Enunciation Philothruthis Society in recognition of 80 years of remarkable service and personifying the name as you serve as a friend to the poor and a beacon of hope to vulnerable populations in Baltimore. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on this ninth day of January 2017, signed by the President, Bernard C. Jack Young. And all members of the city council, congratulations on this 80th year.
Okay. Chair recognize, Councilman Burnett.
Hello? Thank you for, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to extend floor privileges to my special guest, the family of Ms. Charmaine Langley Dixon.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All of the favor extending the floor privileges to Councilman Burnett's guests, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Your guests may take the floor. Key lime. Sweet and salt. Yeah, boy. I'm kidding you. Jose, we have to get a new thing for this. Thank you. So, what can we request? Oh, I can tape it down.
So, it's always, thank you all for coming up. It's always a tragedy when we have a loss of life in our city, but I wanted to take the time to acknowledge Ms. Langley Dixon. She was the assistant principal at Beachfield Elementary Middle located in the 8th District. And I didn't personally know her, but I immediately started getting calls from members of the community, from the schools. It was complete devastation at her loss. She meant so much for that community, she meant so much to those students, and gave a tremendous amount of support to our young people in the city and gave her life to education. So, I wanted to invite out her family. I did already give them the official citation when I came by for the viewing, but I just wanted to acknowledge the tremendous amount of work that she did for our young people. And I'll read this on the floor for her as well, but thank you all for coming. The City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore extends its sincere sympathy to the family of Charmaine Langley Dixon, born January 11th, 1963, and passed on December 14th, 2016. The entire membership offers its respectful condolences and directs this resolution to be presented on the ninth day of January 2017. Council President Bernard Jack Young, Councilman Christopher Burnett, 8th District. Again, thank you all for her service, and I know that you continue to do the work and her memory to live on. Is it okay if we take a picture and we can make sure you get a copy? Yeah, okay.
Committee announcements. Chair recognize, Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, the executive appointments will be having the legislative oversight on Wednesday, January 18th, at 10:00 a.m. in the DuBurn Center. Thank you.
Committee announcements. Committee announcements. Chair recognize, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee will be having a legislative oversight hearing on Tuesday, January 17th, excuse me, 6:30 p.m. at Coppin State University at the Talon Center, for the purpose of calling on the Baltimore City Police Commissioner to provide 2016 year end data and present the department's violent reduction strategy for 2017, in light of another year of unacceptable levels of violent crime plaguing the city of Baltimore. Mr. President and members of the council, we are having this hearing at Coppin State because it's in the Western District, where, of course, we've had the majority of our homicides in the last year. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Seconded by Councilman Henry. All of the favor of suspended rules to announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is encouraged.
Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee will be hosting a hearing for Council Bill 17-0002R on Wednesday, February 22nd, here in the council chambers at 5:00 p.m., and that is for the resolution introduced today about coordinated agency violence reduction strategy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more committee announcements? Chair recognize, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear the Legislative Oversight Bill Number, or Legislative Oversight Number 17-0003, and it will be heard on Thursday, January 26th, 2017, 10:00 a.m. in the Burns Room. And it's an orientation for members of the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. Representatives from city agencies will present information to the committee about legislative activity that pertains to certain tax, finance, and economic development topics in Baltimore City. I also have a press release from the Baltimore City Democratic State Central Committee that the press release was given on December 30th. And because this is our first council meeting in a while, I'm going to read or added just information. The Baltimore City Democratic State Central Committee is presently accepting resumes to fill the position of delegate for the 41st Legislative District pending the resignation of, and I guess she did resign already, Jill Carter from the Maryland House of Delegates, which was effective on Monday, January 2nd, 2017. To reply, one must be a registered Democratic voter in the state of Maryland, must have resided in the 41st Legislative District for at least one year, and be 21 years of age or older. Resumes for consideration must be received no later than the end of business Friday, January 13th, which is this week, 2017. All resumes must be sent to Ms. Angela Gibson, the District Chair, Baltimore City Democratic State Central Committee, PO Box 23762, Baltimore, Maryland 21203-5762. Interviews will be held on Wednesday, January 18th, 2017, at the Forest Park Golf Course Clubhouse located at 2900 Hillsdale Road and West Forest Park Avenue. activity that pertains to certain tax, finance, and economic development topics in Baltimore City. I also have a press release from the Baltimore City Democratic State Central Committee that the press release was given on December thirtieth, and because this is our first council meeting in a while, I'm going to read for added, just information. The Baltimore City Democratic State Central Committee is presently accepting resumes to fill the position of delegate for the forty-first legislative district pending the resignation of, and I guess she did resign already, Jill Carter from the Maryland House of Delegates, which was effective on Monday, January second, twenty seventeen. To apply, one must be a registered Democratic voter in the state of Maryland, must have resided in the forty-first legislative district for at least one year and be twenty-one years of age or older. Resumes for consideration must be received no later than the end of business Friday, January thirteenth, which is this week, twenty seventeen. All resumes must be sent to Ms. Angela Gibson, the district chair, Baltimore City Democratic State Central Committee, P.O. Box two-three-seven-six-two, Baltimore, Maryland, two-one-two-oh-three dash five-seven-six-two. Interviews will be held on Wednesday, January eighteenth, twenty seventeen, at the Forest Park Golf Course Clubhouse located at twenty-nine-hundred Hillsdale Road and West Forest Park Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland, two-one-two-fifteen, beginning at six p.m. Applicants will be notified of their specific interview times. The seven voting members of the forty-first district State Central Committee will vote publicly after all interviews have been concluded to fill the vacancy. If you have any questions, please contact Angela Gibson at four-ten-nine-one-seven-five-one-five-one or email Angela, A-G-A-K-A at M S N dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognize Councilman Scott. Huh? Okay. Regular announcements. On the members' desk is a letter requesting approval of the appointment of Councilwoman Risinger to serve as the council representative to the Planning Commission. Need a motion?
Wait, Councilman Risinger?
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All the favor approving Councilman Risinger's appointment to the Planning Commission, say aye. All opposed, nay. The most encouraged, the appointment is confirmed. Some of you should have, do they have the letters on their desk? I'm talking about for the appointments to the various things. Are they not on their desk? Okay, well, we're going to email those council people who were appointed to boards and commissions, and it will be emailed out after this meeting. Chair recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, I rise first to say that thus far in the year of two thousand and seventeen, we have had seven homicides in the city of Baltimore, and ask that Council Vice President Middleton, please honor a moment of silence for them. But also today, Mr. President, yourself and myself attended the funeral of a friend of mine and the president's, Keon Carpenter. Most people know him as a NFL player, just happened to grow up here in Baltimore, but I personally know him as a person like me that loves kids. You know, you, I have interacted with a lot of sports stars in my life, but I've never met someone who genuinely had a heart as big as Keon's. Anytime, you know, just three weeks ago, he called me at ten o'clock at night to try to ask me to help him with something for their program because they operated in my district. And it's just sad to see someone like him go at such a young age for his family, but it's also a challenge to all of us, those who were involved in helping his program or not, to try to pick up what he was trying to do and having these young, young men and young women be involved in these sports, but also excelling in life in the classroom as young men, as young women, in their communities. And it's really, Aaron Maven, who, another Baltimore former NFL star, said it best, "We need a thousand Keon Carpinter's in the city of Baltimore, a thousand men who care about their community enough to come back even when they don't live here and do much more for their community that they no longer live in than people who live here each and every day." So I also, Councilwoman, would like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Keon Carpenter as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Those words were true. Keon was a great individual. One young lady put on Facebook how she was afraid to smile. Remember that one? And she talked to Keon, he told her she had a beautiful smile, smiled. And the reason why she wasn't smiling, because she needed dental work. And he told her he was going to take her out to eat. And they rode by all of these restaurants, and she asked him, "While we're riding by these restaurants, we could stop here and eat." And he took her straight to the dentist, and you ought to see her smile today. I mean, that's, you cannot do it any better than that. And, you know, he was just a great individual, and, you know, he, you know, he was just a great individual. I don't want to talk anymore. Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to ask for a moment of silence tonight for Mr. Joe Armstead, who passed away last week. People all across Baltimore City knew Joe, he was a longtime city employee and labor leader, both in Asme and then in Cub, but in my district, he was a community leader. He was the person who brought the Ramblewood Community Association back from nonexistence and held it together during tough times, and we will miss him. And so I would appreciate a moment of silence. Thank you.
Regular announcement, Chair recognize Councilman Cohen.
Mr. President, last Thursday, the Education and Youth Committee held its first hearing at Frederick Douglass High School. I want to thank Councilman Pinkett, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, and yourself, as well as my committee members, for attending. It was a packed house. Over four hundred people came out. The primary concern in the meeting was the change in the S-PAS policy. Young people used to be able to ride from five a.m. to eight p.m. Now those hours have been restricted back to six p.m., which has caused immeasurable pain in our city. And I was moved by the children, parents, advocates, educators that came out to speak in one voice and say that we need to get our kids back on the bus. So again, I want to thank you for your advocacy. I want to thank our council and the committee. This is something that we need to do. Children need to have access to after-school programs, and they need mobility, and we need to get them back on the bus. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And it was a great meeting. Got there late, but it was a great showing, and just listening to the kids say that they want to get to after-school activities was really exciting for me because we need to keep our kids in positive programs so that they won't be out doing some of the things that some of our youth are doing in the city of Baltimore. So I committed to you to try to help find that funding. It's only two hundred thousand dollars. If you're listening, you have a checkbook for two hundred thousand dollars, we'll take it. Thank you. Chair recognize Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. As everyone knows, we passed a charter amendment in the city with eighty-three percent of the vote to reform the audit process. Article five, section eleven of the city charter provides for the establishment of a biennial audits oversight commission. I wanted to let you, Mr. President, and the council, know that we will be announcing the first hearing of that entity, hopefully at the January twenty-third council hearing, which is our next hearing, and hopefully have that in early February so we can get started off on the right foot. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you. Any more announcements? Chair recognize Councilwoman Clark.
Just two comments. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I want to second the motion from my colleague in the first district. It was a wonderful Education and Youth Committee hearing, and I'm sure will result in positive hours for the children of our, of our school system. I would like to stand this evening to say another mission ahead of us is to try to bring the school system back into the city of Baltimore. I'm pleased to see the mayor is supporting legislation or helping to sponsor legislation in Annapolis that would give the sole appointment to the mayor of the members of the board, of the school board. I hope that we are included in that. It's very important that we have the right, as a city council, to confirm those appointments and hold public hearings so all of Baltimore City can participate. So we're off to a great start. I'm feeling very positive about the committee and our future. I would like to add something I've been asked to mention here on the floor of the council. In the Northern Police District, and also, by the way, in the Central Police District, local police are responsible for I-83, the Jones Falls Expressway. And you remember the tragic accident that occurred years ago when one of our female officers was hit and actually catapulted off into, and off the highway into a fall far below. That was a Northern Police Officer, and I know that Central picks up where Northern leaves off. With all the shortage of police that we are talking about, glad to have a hundred more officers coming from somewhere to patrol the streets. We'd like the officers that are on the I-83, JFX, to come off and be in the neighborhoods where we need them and ask the state police to cover the JFX. It does in the county, it does on the Beltway, and we'd like them to just continue on, they're doing a great job there, continue on on our behalf all the way to President Street and free our own officers to be back in the neighborhoods where we desperately need them. Thank you.
Thank you. That's on our radar as well. Okay. Chair recognize Council, Vice President Middleton to make her comment, and then we're going to move for adjournment.
I just want to also give a moment of silence for Stella Fullwood, which is the wife of, I'm sure, a number of people know Everett Fullwood, which was a star football player at Morgan and became a police officer for the city, and he also worked for the Downtown Partnership. His wife passed away last, recently, is last night. It just happened to be my next-door neighbors. She had suffered with a stroke back in July and didn't fully recover, so if you all, I'm sure a number of you know Everett Fullwood and how dedicated him and his wife are to the city of Baltimore, so please, if you know him, get a chance to say something to him. He is, you know, really struggling because they were a couple that did everything together for over thirty-some years. So anyway, on that note, we want a moment of silence for the seven homicides, for Keon Carpenter, for Joseph Armstead, and for Stella Fullwood. And the next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, January twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen.
Twenty-third. Thank you. They have been afforded the business. This concludes the second meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.